It's time now for the Casey Ingram Show on WSTU. The opinions expressed are those of the program hosts and guests and not necessarily those of WSTU. WSTU does not endorse products that may be mentioned. Any reproduction or retransmission of this broadcast is strictly prohibited without written consent of WSTU. It's time to call in with your questions and comments at 220-978-820-WSTU. And now here's Casey Ingram.
Well, good morning and welcome back. It's another cloudy Wednesday, actually. We've had a lot of cloudy days lately here in Stewart. I don't know what's going on.
This weather's been crazy.
It has.
I feel like we have a wetter dry season than we had a wet season this year.
I agree. I agree. I know. It's very unusual. This is supposed to be our dry season and it hasn't been anything but. So anyways, I want to start out here with thanking my sponsors, of course, with Indian Town Marina. So attention boaters, are you looking for a safe harbor during hurricane season or a top notch boatyard to keep your vessel in tip top shape? Look no further than Indian Town Marina. Indian Town Marina is not just your average boat storage facility. It's nestled in South Florida along the Okachobee Waterway, very well protected hurricane hole and savvy cruisers love to call it home. They offer a full array of boatyard services and they're do it yourself. So reserve your safe hurricane harbor today. It's never too early to do that, folks. You, every year when a hurricane comes, there's boaters that are looking for a place to keep their boat because they didn't reserve a spot and it's tough. So your insurance company really likes you to have a safe harbor, trust me. But let Indian Town Marina be the ultimate caretaker for your vessel and you can give them a call at 772-597-2455 or visit indientownmarina.com. Also, I'd like to thank Commercial Mortgage, which has been in the industry of small balance corporate finance since 2003. Their focus is on equity, new debt solutions, challenging corporate foreclosures and debt restructures. Commercial Mortgage never charges a front fee or deposit and consultations are always free. Areas of expertise include hotels, marinas, office buildings, restaurants, apartments, multifamily, condos, golf courses, home builders and land development, including new and repurposed developments. Call Commercial Mortgage LLC 561-310-5295 or visit them online, commercialmortgagellc.com. So in the studio today, I'm really excited to start back up with a meet your candidate series. We already have a lot of candidates that are filing for office and there's a wave, I feel like, in the community where people are looking for a change and there's been a lot of things that have happened in the last few years, a lot of growth here in the area. And people are frustrated and sometimes change is a good thing, right? And that's what our political process is about and I'm always excited to support all of the candidates because it's a real commitment for somebody to file, to run for office and then actually run. You got to fundraise and meet a lot of people and you're out there and your family's out there in the spotlight too.
Absolutely.
So it's a big deal. And today I have Michael Circus in the studio. He's a past guest that has been on the show quite a bit and we've always talked a lot about the local politics and you have really had the pulse on the community, Michael.
I've tried to, that's for sure.
You have, you have, and we're going to talk, we're spending the entire hour with Mike and tell you a little bit about him. He is running for District Five, which is currently held by Commissioner Ed Campy. He's a near lifelong resident of Martin County who ascended through the elementary middle and high school within the county school system. Aside from birth in Palm Beach and college military training in Tallahassee, then Orlando, Martin County has spent his home. He was raised here, his wife was born here and their kids are born in the same room at the hospital. That's very cool.
It is.
Some of the same teachers at my girl's school today are the same as when my wife attended. We live on the same land that we learned to ride horses on as kids and we are raising our children to enjoy the same. Our Martin County heritage is under attack by a select few who prize their legacies over well being. That is unacceptable. Mike is running for County Commissioner, District Five, to once again place the needs of the people over the wish list of the commission. We must stop the excessive spending, stop the rampant development sprawl, most importantly, develop the next generation of leaders to work to the same end. Community heritage over commissioner legacies. It's that simple. As a county, we've created a generational problem. As a community, we will solve it. And that is from Michael Circus, District Four, District Five, his Facebook, that's your about page and a really good bio on yourself, Michael. So there's a lot of things here to cover and folks, before I get in with, to talk about a lot of these important topics with Michael, I'm watching on my Facebook Live page, which is on the Casey Ingram Show. If you have any questions or comments for Mike, please put them there and I'll pass them along. Also, I'm going to have Jim Urillo. He is running against Commissioner Doug Smith, District One. He'll be in the studio on February 14. Next week, January 31, I'm going to have Sean Reed. He's running for City of Stewart Commission Group Four. So he'll be in and also some future guests, Vicky Davis, Supervisor of Elections. She's a rock star. Michael Main, he's our new Superintendent of Schools. He took over. So that's right, we're going to have Michael Main here in March. So a lot of great shows are coming up, but Mike, let's start with you. There's so many topics we've talked about, you and I, here in this very studio.
I know, we've been all over the map, haven't we? It's been fun though.
It has been fun. It has been fun. And I've always said, you are a young and up and coming leader here in the community and a rising star in the Republican Party and you really have dedicated a lot of time to watching local politics. I see you every week, the Martin County Commission making comments. You were there yesterday and you really bring in some thoughtful conversations.
Well, I appreciate that very much. And I mean, actually you're talking about some of your future guests. I sat down last night with Sean Reed and it's funny because this is someone that actually went to school with my wife when they were like under this counter height.
Oh my goodness.
You know, you talk about people have been here forever in a day.
Yes.
You know, as he and I were talking yesterday, I told him, you know, it's weird for me getting into politics because it's nothing that I ever intended to do as a candidate or as an elected person. I've always enjoyed being an advocate on the backside and helping to try to make something happen. And now that you get into politics, everybody's like, well, you got nothing to lose. And I'm like, well, no, not me personally. He says, I got everything to lose. And so that's why I'm doing this. And we look at the life we've developed, a lot of generational people here in Martin County, the lives that we've developed, we've seen so much change over the last 15 to 20 years that, I mean, most people, they can't afford to stay here in the county, even with homes and land that they've been on for generations. If you can't afford it, I mean, a lot of times the business opportunities, we have a lot of great business opportunities, but not enough to substantiate the cost of living in this area. And some of us, I mean, I have lives, I'm very blessed and fortunate to raise some poultry and have some horses that are boarded by other folks and whatnot. And we're getting squeezed out all around because a lot of rampant sprawl that's coming outside the urban service boundary and squeezing in on these pockets. And it just makes you think, it's like, you know, who are we looking out for in the county now? It's, I welcome everybody that wants to come in. That's great. If you want to join us, then join us, but don't change us. And unfortunately, over the last 15 years, 20 years, that's what we've seen is a lot of people that are coming from out of state, a lot of people coming from other communities to our north and south. And it's great that they want to enjoy that Martin County heritage, but they're not. They're changing it into the heritage that they want.
That they love.
And it's at the detriment to us. And, you know, I want you to join us and enjoy us, but don't change us into what you want it to be. You know, recognize the difference that made Martin County different and unfortunately, I don't think our commissioners are doing that right now.
There's been a lot of votes that you have filed and we've talked about a lot of them here, but yesterday I heard you mention one that you mentioned last year that I think is extremely important, Save Our Homes exemption. If you could talk a little bit about that.
I did, I did. So the Save Our Homes exemption, this is something we brought from the commission a little over a year ago, prior to the Live Local Act being introduced in the Senate. And what we're trying to do is take a look at addressing the affordability crisis in not just Martin County, but this would be a statewide thing. Address the affordability crisis by making it where if you move into your family's home to take care of your aging mother or father, when they pass away and leave the house to you and the deed changes, or excuse me, not the deed, the homestead, when you add an adult onto the homestead, you lose that 3% cap year over year, which is a huge bonus to somebody, a homesteader, it's a huge savings. I mean, I looked at my parents' house, for example, their property tax bill would nearly triple if they were to try to encourage my younger brother to move back home, say, hey, here's a house, mom and dad are retiring, we're going to go travel the world, X, Y, Z, whatever it is, you know, or if he comes in to take care of them. My father-in-law, before he passed, I remember watching his property tax bill explode after he passed away. And the only thing we did was add the word estate at the end of the deed. So these people, there's a lot of people in the county that are generational that they want to stay here in Martin County. And we keep talking about repatriating youth back to Martin County after they get a college education or early career training. We keep talking about this, but it's not an affordable position. There's no affordability to it. So we talked to the county and said, we want to change the Save Our Homes Act. And it was, we had great forward momentum in the State House until Senate Bill 102 came in. And when Live Local arrived, everything else was backburnered. This was the end all be all to solve our affordability crisis. A year later, it hasn't.
It has not at all.
Yeah, and it's not going to, to be quite frank. And neither is the Save Our Homes extension. That's not going to be the end all be all either. But that is an extra tool that we can utilize and it's so low hanging fruit. I mean, you can put your minor child onto it, but not your adult child. And you already have portability. You can take your Save Your Home savings to anywhere else in the state of Florida. So all we're saying is apply that portability to the homestead. Actually treat homesteads like they were created to be treated.
Truly is a homestead.
Yeah, exactly.
Absolutely, right.
So low hanging fruit that we can do to save really a lot of people. And generational wealth, let's be honest, that's the wealth that lasts in our community. A gentleman before, Mark was talking about inflation. You want to beat inflation, the only way to do it's through generational wealth.
That's right.
So why can't we do something to encourage that? And that's something I asked the county commission to put into their 2025 legislative priorities list for the next legislative session in Tallahassee. And I was encouraged by what Doug Smith had to say. He followed up, I'm going to be honest, when he said Regional Planning Committee, the first thing I thought was, they laughed that one right out the door. The fact that they're even willing to entertain the idea, because there is a financial component, there's bonus money that the county receives every time you sell the house.
Okay, right, right.
So it's not a huge amount. It's like $5 million is what Martin County has in those bonus dollars. But $5 million on a $640 million budget, I think we should allow $5 million to stay in the pocket of the person that's living in that house.
That seems like common sense legislation to me, Michael.
Absolutely.
It reminds me a lot of the farmers that when a farmer passed away and the taxes was so expensive, the family couldn't pay it and the inheritance tax, basically.
And those are the people that are really going to benefit from something like this. Most people don't have that generational living ideology. I mean, it's something that I love, something I do with my father-in-law, something I hope to do with my children.
Right.
But I'm not, that's not everybody.
Right.
And that's great if you don't want to do that. But when you look at farmers, right, if you have a farm, you have 500 acres and you're raising your cattle and whatnot, and the patriarch or matriarch passes away, first of all, it's a blessing if you have a child that's willing to enter that industry because that is a, you're borrowing from next year's profits to make this year's seeds in the ground.
You're land rich and cash poor. I mean, that's really how it is.
Absolutely. And then when they die, the parent or the patriarch matriarch dies, if you do have somebody willing to take over, now you've got a gap year. So you have agricultural exemptions, you've got to reapply for it because you've got business title changes, inheritance taxes, business, like I said, the business change is not just on the ag land, but also the business tax structure itself, the IRS. And then most small farmers live on their land. That's where their house is.
Right.
So if you've got 70 years or 60 or 30 years that you're in that house or generation over generation, I mean, that's a huge savings. That house just skyrocketed on. You watch a property tax bill go from $5,000 to $25,000 a year and it's a penny in the bucket for the county. Realistically, it's peanuts to them, but it's everything to that homeowner.
It's a big deal to that family. It truly is. And you had mentioned something too that I just, I was astounded at, and that was the typical household tax bill and it's increased 144% in the last six years.
Yes, seven years, yep. So the, our current county, county commission, the five of them as a collective unit, the first budget they approved was seven years ago. And I believe it was about $1,700 was the typical Martin County household bill in, I guess that was 2017. And now this, this recent one was over $4,000. And I don't have the numbers on me right now, but it's about 144% is what it increased. That's two and a half time increase in seven years. And I mean, several commissioners have said it before. They said, you know, your homes are worth more, your homes are worth more and your property taxes are based on the value of your house. That's 100% correct. I don't challenge that one bit. What I challenge is this idea that your home is considered, your home needs to be this financial asset. Because at the end of the day, your home or any asset is only of value when you liquidate it. You know, you can have a million dollar watch on your wrist, but all it does is tell time until you take it to the pawn shop and then it's a million dollars.
Right.
Same thing with your house. And your house is your castle. And these are one of the very few objects in life where you don't think about the fiscal value of your house because that's where you're laying your head down at night, where you raise your kids, where if I'm lucky, I hope to get buried in the yard with the horses.
Right.
I mean, my personal desires. I don't want to look at my house as an asset. And most people that want to stay in this county that were born and raised here and want to die here and raise their families, their house isn't an asset. It's actually a liability. Your homeowner's insurance, property taxes, just your upkeep and maintenance, it's a fiscal liability and you're willing to absorb that because that is your castle. But you can't go around and say, oh, our house values have doubled in five years, our house doubles, our house values have tripled in five years. Okay, that's irrelevant to somebody that has no urge or desire to sell their house. If we're trying to kick out generational people or if we want people to leave the community and sell their home and have transplants come in, that's an ideology that I'm not going to shake that at anybody. If that's your philosophy, then hey, great for you. That's not my philosophy though. You know, I don't think that's the right thing to do. And we cannot have a budget that is predicated on that idea. Well, your house value went through the roof, so we're going to spend extra money. Well, no, my house value went up only if I sell the house. So how about we stay within our means and stop mortgaging my kid's future and your kid's future to finance these new bells and whistles? It's not practical.
Again, we're speaking with Michael Circus. He's running for Martin County Commission, District Five. You know, Mike, I think really one of the things that strikes me as I listen to you is not only are you, you're very well read, you know the issues very well. You've been passionate about them long before you filed to run, by the way.
Long before.
I had talked to Michael, you know, a couple of years ago, I said, are you going to run? Ah, I don't know, I don't know. I just like, you know, studying things and keeping on top of the issues in the area. But what strikes me with you is I think as you saw the county continue to change, the demographics changed, our cost of living changed, as you said, everything has went up. Some of the things are not in the commission control, like the insurance rates and, you know.
They're not, but there is an effect on that. I would say that that's a scapegoat. The commission says, you know, we can't do anything about insurance rates, so we just throw our hands up in the air. Well, there's a lot of things that I can't do anything practical on, but I can't just throw up my hands in the air and quit either. You know, we look at home values in Martin County and this is a huge impact on your property insurance, it's the value of your home, right?
Right.
So here in Martin County, and I know I'm going to step on a couple of toes when I say this, but this is all right. You know, in Martin County, when we look at our budget, we talk about how the per capita income's $100,000. Well, if you have one person that makes a million dollar salary and nine people that are slaves getting $0, your per capita income's $100,000. That's a law of averages. So if you look at the median household income, this is the household income, your typical household in Martin County pulls in about $65,000 to $70,000 a year. So that's, I mean, my household, the two household income.
Right.
Very blessed that my wife has a nice job and I sweat and work for my dollars, the little that I collect, but our typical household income is about on par to everybody else's. So we're not living with everybody's getting $100,000 salary. You know, this isn't the Hamptons. And realistically, if you take a look at the census numbers, one out of 10 people in Martin County is in poverty. Over 10% of Martin County is in poverty. But yet we spend money as if everybody is that ultra millionaire million dollar salary. We've got a lot of those. We have a lot of people with good salaries and I wish them the best in life. I really do. I'll have a beer with you like anybody else. But we can't spend like our bank accounts look like your bank accounts because they don't.
They don't. A lot of those transplanted here as well.
Absolutely.
The money wasn't made here, it was brought here.
Yeah.
So and to your point, you know, the folks that were born and raised and have lived here for generations, that the majority of the businesses just don't offer that type of employment or opportunity.
And as a homesteaded property owner, let me take this opportunity to tell all those snowbirds who don't have a homestead on their multimillion dollar mansions, thank you for the subsidy.
Right, right.
I mean, I appreciate it. I understand and it's not that I'm against you by any stretch of imagination. What I'm against is having a discretionary budget or a budget within our county that caters to this idea that we are all like you.
Right.
We're not against you, we just want to be realistic of what's going on in the ground. And those of us who are homesteaded, those of us who've been here our whole lives, we can't afford this, this two and a half times increase in seven years. Especially our home values now, we're coming off of 10 years of growth, growth, growth after that bubble pop.
That's right.
You know, we're at the top of Mount Everest and we're looking down. You know, we're enjoying the high times now. Things are going to get tough. And if you take a look at our budget, the outstanding debt right now is well over $100 million. And we take in 630 something million this year. But what scares the you-know-what out of me, our general reserves, these are our open reserves we can use for emergency, about $17 million is what we have in general reserves. The consent agenda yesterday was 15 million for two weeks. So our open-ended, if everything hit the fan and we needed to reach into our pocket, we had two weeks' money on hand. That's, that is scares the you-know-what out of me.
That is very frightening.
Yeah.
Let's talk about that consent agenda a little bit. That's something that is brought up a lot. I know there's a gentleman that speaks every week at the.
Oh yeah, Tom Pine, yep.
Yep, and he talks about that consent agenda and he brings out to the public, these things around the consent agenda, there's no discussion, they just get voted. So, you know, you just spoke about that too, that there was $15 million. That was just one commission meeting.
So especially to Tom's point, because he, the finances is something very important to him, especially in the consent agenda. When you go to click on that item, it brings up an abbreviated page. I believe there's four lines on it. The debt service, insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, stuff like that. There's four lines that give you a total. But there is a link where you can click on the clerk of court's office and you can bring up the expenditures. So there is an access point there. I don't want to say, I don't want to criticize the county unjustly.
Right.
There is an access point. It's not clear and it's not always easy to get to, but it can get to it. And then when you click on that access point to see what it is, I went through just for giggles one day and I'm looking and I had to give up. Because for a two week period, when you look at it, I remember seeing well over three dozen of the same contractor, the same value amount, the same date. And I can only presume it's probably maybe a landscaper or somebody that's doing 30 different firehouses in the county. You know, it was a hundred dollars apiece.
Okay.
And I don't remember the name of the contractor, but there was just a volume of hundred dollar checks, about 30 of them. It's like, okay, you're probably paying for landscape and you're programming it to each individual, maybe a fire station or whatever it might be. So, but to you, I was like, wait, hold on now, there's, there's an item line that has a couple of digits and numbers on it, an internal code to tell you where it goes, but there's no transparency in saying this is for landscape, this is for palm trees, we bought 100 palm trees at a hundred bucks apiece, whatever it was. The transparency, it wasn't there as much as you would think. And if we're trying to get constituents to be involved and be educated about this, whether we're going to like the result or not, getting them involved and educated, we really could do a better job of showing where that money's going.
Transparency, transparency. We always say it, but there are ways to make it even more transparent.
It's your money, it's your future, it's my money, my kid's future. That's what finances our government.
That's right.
And, you know, I'm not saying dumb it down because people are dumb, but people are busy. We've got a lot of things on our plate and we're just trying to feed our families and stay alive here. So, you know, help us out to be transparent. You help us out, maybe we'll stop coming in front of you and getting so angry all the time.
That's right.
There's probably a lot of situations where you're getting a lot of unjust, unjust flack. I mean, that happens. So here, help us help you. How's that sound?
And to Mike's point, this is why it's so important that you know who you vote for and I appreciate you coming in today so that listeners get an idea of who you are and what you are about. Because those five commissioners, when we elect them, you know, most of us are busy and may not have time to go through and even look at the agendas. You're counting on that person to represent your best interest. You're counting on them to go through and read that consent agenda. That's their job. You're commissioner now. We've hired you. So it's, it's super important, folks, that you make sure that you're not just voting for a popular name or whoever has the most signs or whatever. This is, this is why I do these shows. So you get to know.
There's a salary, it's a full-time job, it's a full-time responsibility and, you know, whether the salary is a dollar or a trillion dollars per year to pay you to do the job, you've got to keep in mind that, you know, Martin County Tax Collection, it's 160,000 people plus businesses paying well over a billion dollars a year in taxes, like 1.3 billion. So that's a lot of pesos to be pulling in on a year on your wrist. You need to treat that like that is a true detriment to your community because that's the money you're taking out of your community's pocket. You need to show it the responsibility and the respect that that deserves.
100%. If you want to see a little bit more about Michael Circus, he has a Facebook page, Michael Circus for District Five. And it really has a lot of different issues and we're going to cover them when we get back on the other side of the hour here. Because we've, we've talked a lot about just issues that impact all the residents here in Martin County, whether they're constitutional issues, taxpayer issues, and we're going to talk a little bit about even the commissioners discretionary funds that they have.
Sounds good.
So all those things are very important to all of us here. But again, we're speaking with Michael Circus. He's running for Martin County Commission, my first meet your candidate of the year. I'm so excited about that.
That makes me excited.
And I know, I know, kicking it off. And, you know, we had, of course, the primary last night, switch over to national politics. Trump won in New Hampshire as was expected. So it's just down to two candidates on the Republican ticket. So we're going to have a really hot political year this year, but we're going to take a real quick break and we're going to come back and talk with Michael Circus, running for District Five, Martin County Commission here shortly.
You're listening to the Casey Ingram Show on WSTU, Digital 1450. Call in with questions and comments at 220-978-820-WSTU. And now, back to the show.
Welcome back to the second half hour. Again, I have Michael Circus. He's running for Martin County Commission, District Five, in the studio, my first meet your candidate of the year. These are so important because it's truly the people that are representing us, we vote and a lot of us go back to our jobs and hope the county continues or the state, whatever, whoever we're voting for, city, hopefully that they're representing your interests in the best way possible. And I'll tell you what, one of the things that we talked about before we went on break was how much taxes. The typical household tax bill has increased about 144% in the last seven years. That's absolutely incredible. And we look at some of those issues. We talk about the budget and right before the break, I mentioned something called the commissioners discretionary budget.
Yes, so every MSTU or every commissioner, excuse me, every district has their own MSTU Yes. So every M S T U or every commissioner, excuse me, every district has their own, uh, M S T U to develop funds to stay within the district for whatever projects, you know, a lot of times will be used for maybe there's additional funding for this road that needs addressing or that road needs addressing or subject sewer conversions. It it's essentially a kitty to help out, um, other program funds and and to be able to stay with, but stay within the district. And, uh, what's really interesting in District Five, right before the the budget for twenty twenty four was approved, we saw a hike in the district funds for going into District Five. Uh, I don't remember the number off the top of my head. I'll have to get back to you on that. And then immediately after the first meeting after the budget is approved, we see this land acquisition on seven fourteen for four million dollars, which we're gonna use ten, uh, ten years of borrowing and interest paid to make that land acquisition. And the CRA, I remember going through the CRA notes recently, um, they're kinda, they're a little frustrated over this because you look at the CRA, the entire CRA budget, which by itself was reduced from seventy-five percent reimbursement to a sixty-five percent reimbursement in the C R to make our budget happen. That that was on almost a one percent increase.
Yes.
In order to get it down that low from the six or seven percent increase it was initially proposed at, uh, we had to cut our fist fixed asset budgets. We had to cut the CRA reimbursement budgets. And of course, we remember the parade of threatening, uh, threatening the not-for-profits to slash their funds too.
Right.
Um, so the discretionary funds got got up for District Five and then almost immediately you find those funds are gonna go um, exclusively into repayment of the loan for that land acquisition on seven fourteen. And and I look at this and I look at, we still have two years repayment for the Palm City Place, uh, Park that is not yet finished on Map Road. We still have, um, the the Ripple Ripple Project and a lot of those Map Road improvements, we're still paying off loans on that. And absolutely every single dollar in the CRA outside of the Ripple and the Palm City Place is now going to repayment for that four acres of land. And it makes you question or makes you wonder, in my mind at least, we're buying asset after asset, we're buying all these new assets. And then retroactively, I look at the county courthouse, the old Cultural Center Courthouse. That was, we spent thirty-five minutes arguing about whether or not we're gonna put money into the the fixed asset budget to replace the A C unit in that courthouse. And it just blows my mind because now you have an existing asset where you're saying, eh, we'll wait till next year, we'll put money in it later, don't worry about it. You know, we're not putting money into maintaining assets we have because we're prioritizing buying the new ones. And especially in the the issue of the courthouse, I'm a, I got my undergraduate degree in history and humanities. I'm working on my masters in histories now, and this is just a passion of mine. And I look at the county courthouse, the old Cultural Center Courthouse, and if there's one thing in Florida that you have to do to preserve a historical object, you gotta climb, you gotta climate control, you know? So we're looking at a courthouse that's a hundred years old. It's actually on the, the state of Florida has a a group of books called Heritage Trails. So the A O Kaner Courthouse or the Cultural Center Courthouse is on the Jewish Heritage Trail for the state of Florida. I mean, this is a historical structure statewide, not just Martin County putting their stamp on something. And this is the object where we say, eh, you know, don't worry, a hundred-year-old building, it didn't have A C when it got it, doesn't need it now. You know, that's a, that's a huge pill to swallow. These are existing assets that you have and you're not gonna maintain them because you wanna buy another asset, an asset that you had no plan on what you're gonna do with it. Realistically, it's a retroactive purchase because we had poor forward planning when we extended the CRA. We just had poor forward planning and we still haven't even addressed that issue yet. All we did was buy from a developer, gave them a very handsome profit in the meantime. Taxpayers are on the hook for it, and we still haven't even addressed the fact that if you sell that, the next guy can do the same exact thing, no questions asked. So it's this retroactive reactive position we're taking. We're not planning for the future. We just respond at the moment. We have very little forward planning on how that decision's gonna affect anything. And we say, eh, the next guy will worry about it. My legacy's set, so why do I care?
And this is something, Michael Circus, again, he grew up here in Martin County and you've seen a lot of changes. And you've become so involved with the politics because you, I think you asked yourself, why are these changes happening? How does this happen? What what's the impetus behind this? And, you know, as you see each, here's one, one vote, one decision. But there's a lot of implications that can come from that. And, you know, this is something that you're you're questioning. Wait a minute.
You know, that CRA extension, I fully understand back in, I guess it was ten or twelve, twenty ten, twenty twelve. I understand there was an issue, you know, Publix only had the one store, there wasn't enough shopping places, we had a population boom in Palm City. I get all that and I understand. And I don't have anything against it. I appreciate that idea, that idea. So we're gonna extend the CRA so we encourage this business development in this corridor. Okay, I understand, appreciate that, but if we made our beds, we gotta sit, we gotta sleep in it too. You made the CRA to encourage those business, that business development. And now all of a sudden, a business that is fully qualified, fully, uh, reasonable to that area under your CRA, um, your CRA guidelines. Either it's good or it's not. So if the CRA is an issue and seven fourteen should not be that CRA corridor, then we need to address that. Instead of just buying out somebody's land and saying, okay, well, this is the next guy's problem, that should have been addressed. And that should have been addressed long before we reached into our pocket and spent, you know, four and a half, it'd be close to five and a half million dollars if we do end up taking out a ten-year loan. So you're you're five and a half million on six acres, so you're close to nine hundred thousand dollars an acre. That is a huge tax pill for people that, you know, realistically are struggling to make their tax bills happen. That's a huge pill to swallow and all we do is treat the symptom. We didn't actually treat the virus.
So what are you telling voters, uh, Michael, when they vote for you? What are you gonna tell voters, how you address issues, how you look at issues? How how are you gonna represent the voters?
So first and foremost, we need to start forward planning. Everything we've been doing over the last, I would say, seven to ten years has been so reactionary. And every time you do that, when you don't have a forward plan, you're very limited in what you can actually do. Instead of having ten options and saying, here, let's think them out, you got two options. You decide yes or no today and we'll let the chips fall where they may. So we absolutely have to start forward planning. Uh, on top of that, my big thing is just, we need to focus on what we have in place today. You know, we have infrastructure failing all over the place. This is such a prevalent problem. We've put it in our budget for over ten years. Failing infrastructure and a question of how the funds are gonna come to it. Later on this year, we're gonna see, uh, uh, sales tax proposal. There you go. Sales tax proposal because we got land acquisitions we're trying to do. You know, this isn't the first time we've seen this and every time we need this extra money, extra money. So why do we keep needing extra money? We're the third highest taxed resident in the state of Florida, sixty-seven counties, Martin County is number three. Arguably number one, if you start putting supplemental taxes into all that. You know, we are just absolutely taxed to the bone and our commission comes after the marrow afterwards. And it's not because we don't have the money to do what we need to do, it's because we're not prioritizing what we have versus what we want in the future.
Third highest taxed county.
Third highest.
I don't wanna just like run over that and and point that out. That's out of sixty-seven counties, Martin, Little Martin County.
Little Martin, so Monroe is number one in the state. And for those of you who don't know, that's, you're having a Maai Tai in Key West. I mean, if you go down, these are where the cruise ships are pulling up, so you know that they have some home values there. You know they have land value there. They're who, that's who's beating us. I mean, we're number three. It it's absolutely crazy to think the amount of, we only have a hundred and sixty thousand residents. Like I said, one and a half or one point three billion is what we take between school board and the county. So it's not a question by any means of how much money we have to spend. Again, it's that prioritization. We're gonna slash a couple hundred thousand dollars from the A C unit at the courthouse, but we're gonna buy land for four or the train station, you know, it blew my mind. I I'm not gonna say any names because, you know, I'm I'm fighting against a philosophy here. I'm not against any particular person, particular commissioner or staff member. I I wanna fight a philosophy here. But we have a train station proposal that we offered to Brightline. We said thirty to fifty million dollars would be the county's share. But it's okay, we're probably only gonna spend about twenty percent of that because we're gonna get grant money. Well, what makes you think we're gonna get the grant money? We're putting the station in an economically endangered area. So just to get this, you know, put this in layman's terms, you're taking a train station, you're putting it into an area where you're already having poverty issues. Not a local commuter rail, not any type of of benefit to the community outside of, get on the train and go to Disney, get on the train and go to Miami or bring those in Orlando, Miami up here to enjoy. This is a leisure luxury train station for leisure luxury purpose. And I'm, the business can do what they wanna do, but that is absolutely mind-blowing that three months ago, you're gonna parade the not-for-profits in front of us and say, we're gonna cut eight hundred thousand out of our budget to help feed homeless, to help fight poverty, to help, you know, abused people. That's the money you wanna cut, but we're gonna spend three to five million dollars if we get the grants. We'll spend three to five on a train station that clearly the community doesn't want. I mean, that is, that's just the antithesis of of idiocracy, in my opinion.
And I, as many of you know, I started Florida Nat Oliver Board and I'm gonna go back to that train station for just one minute. And that train station, the county agreed to pay for half of that train station if they, if Brightline built in Martin County. That was part of their settlement agreement. And I remember that day clearly because not one commissioner asked, how much does a train station cost? At this time, I knew they were costing around seventy, sixty, seventy million down south of here, the train stations that they had put in. And we did this to settle a five million dollar lawsuit that was gonna be decided, this was decided on a Saturday. The lawsuit was decided the following Tuesday, within a few days, that lawsuit, and we we weren't saving attorney's fees, nothing at this point. But in in return, and this is something I wanna ask you about, Michael, because this is something that really bothered me with the decision. It's not only did not anybody ask how much this train station cost, way, 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 way more than the lawsuit. But the commission agreed that they're not going to oppose Brightline. They can't join any groups that are opposing Brightline. They can't say anything negative about Brightline. So they've basically, um, muzzled themselves in in this agreement.
I'm I'm gonna do you one better. Not only did they muzzled, but we agreed that if Brightline chose our area, we'd pay for half. Brightline put out an R F P, which means they were asking who wants the station. Why didn't we just cut our losses and say, no, thank you, have a great afternoon? Yeah, we lost our lawyer's fees. Yeah, we're gonna sit here and we can't say anything for five years. We gotta keep our mouth.
Can't say anything ever against it.
Ever? Oh, I thought there's a five-year cap on that. Um, yeah, so we can't say anything, we can't bash you, we've lost enough. Why do we have to keep adding insult to injury? We don't have to put in that R F P. We didn't have to say, okay, well, you know, why don't you come on and we'll pay for half it? No, hey, San Lucy County, enjoy your your Brightline station. Four Pierce, enjoy it. You know, I wish you all the best of luck. We don't wanna deal with it. We could have cut our losses, but we didn't. We, you know, we felt like we need to save face, we need to do something to show some type of productivity. Again, going back to those legacies, because if you have a nice shiny station and people start coming in and maybe people use it, maybe people don't, you can spin that and say, yeah, we fought them, but look what we got out of it. We got something, you know, it wasn't a total loss. No, it was a total loss and it's gonna continue to be a loss. But instead of just taking your lumps and saying, hey, listen, I wasn't right, you know? I'm not right about everything. I don't wanna be right about everything. You know, I I try to be righteous about things because one day I'm gonna meet my maker and I wanna be like, yeah, I'm a screw up.
Did my best.
It happens sometimes, but I tried. I tried to do what was right. You know, it's okay to say I made a mistake and there's nothing wrong with the county saying, you know what? Yep, we lost. That's all right. No, we don't want your train station. That's quite all right.
Right.
But we don't do that. You know, it's it it takes a lot of capital, you know, personal capital, not even political, but personal capital to say, I'm not a perfect person.
Right.
And it's very easy to say, well, staff said we should do this and staff recommends that and we're gonna, how many rubber stamps do we have? All the time, we rubber stamp everything on a staff. We don't even ask the question because it takes some personal capital to be like, okay, I might ask a foolish question and I might get put in my place in thirty seconds by the answer. But if you don't know, you don't know and you're not gonna know until you ask that question. And I mean, this this burnt me up in the budget and, you know, the sheriff, for example, the sheriff came in looking for a sixteen million dollar increase in their budget. And he said he wanted to get the same bonuses to his people that the fire, fire rescue got. I fully understand that. I can respect that. You know, it's, we live in an expensive community. We're already having recruitment and retention issues in fire rescue, same thing in police. I get that. You want your twelve percent raise. Well, you just told us that eighty-six million dollars, over seventy percent goes to payroll. So you do the back of the envelope calculations, I believe a twelve percent raise for his staff would have been somewhere in the neighborhood of nine to ten million dollars. Where's the other six going? And I mean, there could be a hundred very positive, very worthy reasons for that. And you and I will never know because nobody asked a question.
Right.
You know, you wanted twelve percent raise increase for your people? I got your back. You're a hundred percent right. Let's get them to twelve percent. Let's make them happy. That's cool. But now you got six million dollars, which is almost exactly what Don Donaldson was told he needed to cut, little under eight, was what we needed to cut to make that that zero mileage rate increase. So now, instead of trying to shave eight million out, just saying, hey, sheriff, you get exactly what you want. We're gonna take that that extra in the middle, that six million, and now you're only shaving two off your budget to get a zero mileage rate increase? I mean, but nobody asked a question. It could have been extremely important. We needed to give him that extra six. I have no idea and we'll never know because we just rubber stamped it and didn't ask the question.
That's what's so important for that representative when they're up on that dais to ask those questions. And that's one thing, uh, you and I have talked about previously is so many times I I hear our commissioners just say, well, that's what staff recommended. So whatever, it's really staff deciding.
Yeah.
Uh, these decisions. And I'm like, why do we have commissioners if you're just gonna go with whatever staff recommends?
And talk about the tail wagging the dog, and this isn't a knock on the staff because staff gets their direction from the commission.
That's their job.
Exactly.
They're not the ones voting on it, though, the ones that are voting in this commission.
Two weeks ago, two weeks ago, Don says, hey, we need to know your priorities for the year so we can dictate the schedule. And they give a list of priorities and staff creates the solutions to address what the commissioners want. And then the commissioners turn around and say, well, staff recommended it. I mean, it's just chicken before the egg, chicken before the egg. And both parties have a part to be in this. And I I know I'm asking a lot of finance, I'm asking a lot of Don and George and Sarah. Uh, Sarah Woods, that is, I'm asking a lot to say this because, yes, the commission does have a certain authority over you. But at some point, where does it hurt to say, listen, you guys have champagne wishes and we got a Bud Light budget? You know, we gotta put it, we gotta.
Somebody has to ask those questions.
Exactly. And it's it's not disrespectful to say, listen, you want a billion dollars worth of stuff and you got six hundred million to work with. So help me, again, help me to help you. We gotta be realistic of where our standpoint is. And if the commission's gonna give dictates and demands to staff, say, here's my dreams and wishes and let's make it happen. Staff will give you exactly what you need. Say, this is how to make that happen. But then as a commissioner, you're gonna just, oh, staff recommended it, so we're gonna run with it. Well, no, you guys gotta work together and ask the question, okay, we have these these wishes and desires, but we also have needs in the community. So where do we prioritize these needs? Let's take care of the failing roads and then we can talk about building out the water park. Let's take care of this land acquisition for environmentally sensitive lands before we go buying land for a dog park. You know, there's.
Very interesting what you're saying, Michael, because staff is, I've I've had a chance to work with them and they work very hard and they're very helpful. They truly are. And so.
Lee's elders, fantastic.
Yeah, it they they work with the direction that's given to them.
Mm-hmm.
And so then that's exactly what you're saying. So it's very important for the commissioners, in my opinion, to to go through the different line items and ask, ask the hard questions. So that's that's what you're saying, Michael Circus is going to focus on.
That's what, that's what we need to be focusing on because we've seen the results of just, staff came to me, so we, they presented it, we approved it. And now come July, you're like, holy crap, what do you mean our our taxes are going up nine percent? Well, you approve this, you approve that, you approve this, you approve that. So we still have to pay for our basic services and we just tacked on ten percent extra worth of stuff. So you gotta pay for it, you know, the bill has come to, Sarah Hertz, she says it very clearly. Niceties over necessities, you know, that or that's that's where we're at at this point. And it's time to pay the bill. And now we're we're balking at it and we're like, oh, no, we can't afford that. You shouldn't have bought it then.
That's right.
I mean, I got a credit card bill I have to pay and it was stuff that I needed, so time for me to step up and be a man and pay my credit card bill.
You gotta figure a way to do that, right?
It's not a six hundred and thirty million dollar credit card bill, but hey, that's that's the position you all put yourselves in.
Right.
But unfortunately, it's you and I that are paying that bill.
That's right. They they can go to the money tree, which is the taxpayers.
That's it. Good thing we've had a rainy, dry season because we need that money tree to grow.
True.
Yeah. Fertilize that bad boy.
However, it happens, let's make it happen.
Yep.
Uh, Michael Circus, uh, running for commission, Martin County Commission, District Five. One thing that I can also say, I I have a really good background because I've had Michael on the show so much. So I I understand a lot of where he comes from, but there was one issue that, uh, you and I worked on. It was a constitutional issue. And, uh, that was something that it was a bleeding heart issue because it was pet stores and, you know, all of a sudden, everybody said pet stores are bad. And it somehow in that fight, it seemed like the commission lost sight of the constitution and basic laws. Forget about if it's a pet store, but what had happened there, uh, these stores were, at that time, voted to shut down, close.
Absolutely.
They had, I think it was about sixteen employees, everybody's gonna lose their job right around Christmas time. It was, it was just astounding. And and, Michael, you made quite a few statements to the county commission and it was all constitutional based. Um, and real quick, they had based their ordinance on an ordinance in a county that was in litigation.
Yeah.
It was already in litigation. So that was the ordinance we we followed, instead of following one like Palm Beach County that was not litigation, that grandfathered them. That's right. So we got sued and.
If only there was a court case already proceeding that would have warned us that this might have happened.
And there was.
Oh, that's right.
Entire time, we, there was when we started the ordinance and when we stopped the, that's right, it was staff recommendation.
That, again, tail wagging the dog.
Right.
You know, there's a a particular commissioner, it's not important who, there's a particular commissioner that that was important to him.
Right.
And hey, that's important to you. And if that's the hill you wanna die on, then knock yourself out, you know? I have several hills that I'm willing to die on. If I don't get elected because all I care about is making sure we don't tax people out of their houses, that's okay. I'm just one out of a hundred and sixty thousand people. If the other hundred and fifty-nine, nine ninety-nine don't like that, then I'm not gonna tell them how to spend their money.
Right.
But I know it's important to me and that's a hill that I'm willing to die on because I believe that's right. So more power to him for what he wanted to do, but at the same time, you gave direction to staff, this is what we want to achieve. Staff gave you the roadmap to make that happen. Um, they had a belief that they weren't gonna, that they crossed their i's, dotted their t's and weren't gonna get sued. I think that was a faulty notion. I tried to point that out to to staff, say, hey, listen, I'm not even saying abandon the project, I'm saying abandon this route.
Right.
Let's try this again, start from the get-go. You got two businesses in the county. You took the time to tell five municipalities you're gonna do it, but you couldn't tell two business owners to show up and speak their piece?
Right.
You know, that's, this wasn't a hundred million people that are gonna have to show up. This is two people.
Right.
Retroactively applied to them and you are absolutely decimating their business model. Yes, they can still sell leashes, but they will never sell as many leashes as Petco.
Right.
You know, that is what they are. They're a boutique pet shop. And if somebody wants to buy a dog from them, as long as they're not selling puppy mill dogs, as long as they're not being abusive to dogs or cats and rabbits, then hey, you know, we have these ordinances in place to address the actual issue. So enforce those ordinances. And yet we told staff what we wanted, staff gave us the roadmap and we approved it. We just didn't ask a question otherwise. And again, that tail wagging the dog. Instead of asking questions and really diving into us and thinking through our actions, we end up doing something that not only was questionably legal and given the fact that we've, the county's been sued, one, I believe, one's been settled, one has not.
Right.
And if you're being settled out of a lawsuit, you, you know, obviously you don't admit your guilt, but you wouldn't be forced into a settlement if you were in the right to begin with. So we didn't ask a question, we didn't prepare for it, and now the county taxpayers are on the hook for that. I mean, I think everybody will tell you, we don't wanna see puppy mills, we don't wanna see dogs abused. Everybody agrees with that. We don't wanna see you going after legitimate business owners either and making their business go away because a select few don't like that flavor of the week.
Right.
Cause the flavor of the week today is gonna be different from next week. Next, it's gonna be, uh, there's an ordinance that's gonna come up soon about, um, tobacco consumption in public parks. And hey, if you're consuming tobacco in a public park and you're doing it in a a mean way, if you're blowing smoke in kids' faces and you're being obnoxious, absolutely, we need to address that. But we have Disturbance of the Peace laws already in books. If you're in an empty park and I'm pushing my kids on the swing set and I'm enjoying my cigar, well, cigars are preempted, but if, let's say I was a smoker of cigarettes. If I'm enjoying a cigarette, pushing my kids on a park swing and nobody else is around, you're gonna tell me I have to leave the parks that my finances, my, uh, tax dollars are already financed? Or even the height of hypocrisy, right? I'm a cigar smoker. I think a lot of people know that. One typical charcoal grill, five-pound bag of charcoal, it would take more than two hundred cigars consumed in these same physical footprint as a five-pound bag of charcoal to create the same volume of smoke. We're not getting rid of charcoal grills. We're not, we're not gonna stop taking your money and allowing you to have a burn pit on the beach during fire season. I mean.
Right.
Yeah. So this is just straight discriminatory against a very particular group of people because, well, there's only sixteen percent of smokers in the world. We don't like that. We're gonna, we're gonna fix the world by getting rid of their individual liberties. It's okay if you don't want to see smoke. It's okay if you don't like people for that purpose, but people have individual liberties. Because what used to be a pet shop became smoking, became, uh, beer vaping. I mean, you just move down the line. They're gonna come for everybody, come for everybody. If you're not standing up for them, it doesn't take long. When they get rid of everybody else, they're coming after you too. And this is why we have a constitution to have individual liberties and protections.
And that's exactly what it is. And that's, with with you, Michael, I always appreciated the fact that you, it it wasn't personal to you. It wasn't a bleeding heart issue. You looked at the constitution and there are a lot of different stories, whether we deem them good or bad was not the point. It was, is it something that that legally is here? And can you just go, if you shut down a pet store, what's next? Is it a gun store?
Absolutely.
You know?
That's it. That's why we have, ironically, that's why we have preemptions for firearms, nineteen eighty-six. Every county had their own regulations on firearms and the state said, nope, we're not playing that game anymore. So now you have a state preemption on that. Tobacco, we talked a lot about tobacco ordinance here, so the state preempted that. Why? Because every county had their own slew and everybody was getting sued. Live Local Act, you know, the reason why we have Live Local Act is because of how many lawsuits between constituents and county. Mom and dad said, we're taking the toy, we're tired of the fighting, and now your rights are gone. So it's a two-way street. You have to be reasonable in your actions. You can't stop on somebody's liberty and create these lawsuits, get challenged. liberty and create these lawsuits, get challenged in court, and then throw your hands in the air and be like, oh, my God, I can't believe we just got sued. I can't believe they took away our rights to stomp on people's liberties. Well, duh. I mean, I'm trying to be professional here, but it blows my mind. You got, you got sued because you stepped on somebody's legal rights, and now you're mad that they took away your ability to step on somebody's legal rights. Don't step on their rights, and you won't get preempted.
And that's what's happened a lot with our local rule, and why it's been taken away from Tallahassee. You just, you just spouted off a lot of different examples, and you're 100% right. That's, Tallahassee sees there's a problem out there. It's not just Martin County, it's happening all over the place.
Absolutely.
They take the ability away for counties to govern herself, which is unfortunate.
Yes.
We, we know what's best, but when we step over the line, it's, you know.
It is a two-way street.
It is very much a two-way street. So, Michael, we just have three minutes left, so tell people why they should vote for you.
I mean, I can't tell you why you should vote for me, but I'm going to tell you what I'm about. We talked about the finances, and we've talked about the forward planning. And the only one out of my top three, what's important to me, the only one we didn't touch on was that forward education. You know, educating people and getting them involved. And that was one of the leading catalysts that, that drove me to do this, was seeing people get involved during the budget meetings. If God blesses me with four years up on that dais, that's amazing. If he blesses me, if I do decide to run for a second, and I get eight, that's fantastic. I'll tell you, I absolutely refuse to do any more than that. I'm a firm believer in term limits, so I'm not going to be there for more than that.
You're saying it here, that's one thing we didn't cover that I wanted to, was the term limits.
See, that, I would make that a legislative priority, not just the state level, but I'd love to see a local ordinance. City of Stewart has three, four-year terms. Why can't we do that at the county level? I mean, 12 years is a long time. I mean, I think eight for Washington was good, so it's good for me. But I know there's constituents that have voted for Doug and Sarah continuously, so there is a desire for maybe more than eight. So what's wrong with 12? I mean, 12 is a good starting number. But most importantly, at some point, we're all going to leave that dais, whether they're there for 10 minutes or 30 years, or whatever it is, we're all going to leave that dais. And if the forward momentum that we might be able to make happen on the dais, if we're not creating that next generation of people that also says, hey, let's live within our means, or hey, let's make sure we prioritize taking care of the assets we have before buying new ones, if we're not creating that next generation, it's all lost. I mean, I'm just wasting my time and spinning my wheels at that point. If I can't get the next people to stand up and hold this same, what I think to be common sense, then why waste my time now? So what I would say is, the people out there listening, you know, go out and talk to your commissioners, talk to everybody in the community, talk to those who are running. Your show, your Meet the Candidates series, there's going to be plenty of people out there that hate me, and they will vote against me at every step, and that's great. But at least you know what I stand for, and you're honest, and you can tell the truth instead of rumors. And that's what we need to do, is get that out there so people can be engaged and educated on it. That's what's important to me.
So folks, again, this is Michael Circus, he's running for Martin County Commission District Five. If you want to help, Michael, of course, you know, it's the way of the world with politics, they need money to run their campaigns, get the advertising, get their word out there. So I know that Michael needs the help, but you can find him on Facebook, Michael Circus for District Five. And how else can they reach you?
We're going to be launching a website very soon, but right now, I'm an old-fashioned guy, so put pen to paper. It costs 68 cents for the US Postal Service, thanks for the donation. But P.O. Box 406, Palm City, 34991.
There you go. That'll help Michael out a lot. Appreciate you being in today. Next week, we're going to have Sean Reed in the studio, and he's running for City of Stewart Commission District Four, so we'll see you then, and thanks for tuning in. Mike.